... to order, this is a meeting of the Lemmonster School Committee. It is Monday, October 2nd. We are at Appleseed's Restaurant. Would you all join me in a salute to the flag? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we have the open and public forum. Anyone would like to address the committee? We have a list tonight, don't we? And as we always do, keep to the two minutes, please. Your name and address for the record, please.
And I guess I would also, I would also just like to point out, I'm not sure who plans on speaking and what the agenda is, but per our policy, there is no criticism of school personnel will be permitted at such a meeting. So just to give people that if that happens, you will be interrupted and asked to stop speaking at that point.
Okay. First speaker looks like Jennifer Kaefer? Kaefer? Jennifer?
If I sneeze, I apologize.
That's all right.
Jen Kaefer, 104 Center Road, Pittsburgh. So we came to you with our concerns last week. We're anxiously awaiting to hear plans to provide solutions and help us create a level one school district for our students. Since we met, Superintendent has communicated his intention to look for other employment while remaining our Superintendent. This adds a greater concern for our district. How invested is he to see this district succeed? And how are you going to hold him accountable to finish his time here with the best intentions of this district as his focus? This leads me to my next point. How have you kept him accountable to his current contract? Has he fulfilled his duties of competency faithfully, efficiently, professionally, and promptly performing all of the duties of Superintendent of Schools? From where we sit, it doesn't appear that this has happened. This district is in ruins. And as said before, we need a leader to lead this district to a better place in order to ensure the success of all of its students. As President of the Lemmonster Education Association, I am asking that you as a committee request the immediate resignation of Superintendent Jolliger. Our students deserve more.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next speaker. Some of these got merged together. So it looks like Sandy Cucciara? And then Lee Burns after that, and Lena Romani? And again, some of these got squeezed together so the letters got mixed in with last names to form new last names. Sandy.
Good evening, Sandy Cucciara. 29 Chapman Place, Lemmonster, Mass. Vice President of the Lemmonster Education Association. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you. Next speaker. You wrote very small.
I had to squeeze in. Leah Burns, 57 Colonial Drive, Lemmonster, Mass. I'm Secretary of the LEA. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Lee. Is it Lena?
Linnea.
Linnea. I like that. Linnea.
Dean, can I just say one thing? I understand what everyone's saying. I'm not trying to stop you from speaking. I just want to make sure that this meeting, we're supposed to go over those concerns?
Right.
So I just want to make sure the audience knows the entire committee has not heard the concerns yet.
So we got a copy of them, but we haven't met as a whole committee. So we really can't discuss those concerns because that would be a violation of the open meeting law. So we've got a copy, and I think we've looked over them, and that's what we're meeting on tonight. And then there'd be an answer forthcoming, just so everybody understands that. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Linnea Romani, 11 Grove Terrace, here in Lemmonster, Massachusetts. Part of me questions the value of making any type of statement tonight since our collective voice has been largely ignored. And no one wants an adversarial relationship, but we as professionals feel disregarded. As teachers and other professionals in the Lemmonster Public Schools, we have been charged this year with a largely unattainable task of forming meaningful relationships with each and every student. This seems ironic after being hamstrung by the number of staff being cut or voluntarily leaving, by our class sizes being increased, and by being subjected to filthy conditions in our buildings. Add to that the unresolved budget crisis leaving many of us feeling anxious about retaining our jobs next year. I've been told by a member of this committee that micromanaging Jim was not their job, and no one would suggest micromanaging him as your job. But being aware of actual budget numbers and knowing where and how money is being spent or squandered is the committee's business. What guarantees can you give us as teachers, employees, and citizens of Lemmonster that moving forward, the budget will be made available for inspection and that decisions are made that benefit the majority of students? NIASC is set to begin soon. That's our accreditation process at the high school. Are we to have an accredited high school that provides a varied curriculum? Or will we lose accreditation because the lack of money will mean music, theater, and art will be cut, as was threatened this past July, and only abandoned due to contractual concerns? Can you imagine football games or a starburst without the bands playing? Can you imagine winter or spring without a theatrical production at LHS? No art show at City Hall in March? Can you imagine potential homebuyers Googling Lemmonster Public Schools and deciding to purchase a home within Lemmonster? I can't. Despite the fact that they're going to choose a surrounding community with well-funded schools, if they want any of the myriad of strolls and festivals touted as a draw to Lemmonster, they'll simply come on the weekend.
Excuse me, your two minutes are up. We have to be fair to everyone. There's a lot of people, it looks like, who need to speak.
But if you'd like to send those, you haven't written, just scan them into us.
Yeah, that would be great. Then we can log at them.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You want a copy back?
No, thank you. Got them.
Okay. All right. Is it Erin O'Toole?
Erin O'Toole, 66 Lawrence Street in Clinton. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of the school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Erin.
Andy Pino, Winchon, Mass. Teacher at Priest Street School. In the light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Andy. Ethan Smith, and then Sarah Ramram?
Ethan Smith, 46 Smith Street, Lemmonster, Massachusetts. We're going to forward you the picture showing the state of the school, the state the school is in currently. We're going to send them out tomorrow. As of right now, the beginning of the year, I walked into school, none of the hallways were swept. The dirt and debris just accumulated in the hallways, the classroom, the lunchroom, until the teachers complained to the administration and the head custodians that these filthy conditions needed to be cleaned up. And it was only then that the decision was made to clean up the classrooms. In addition to the dirty environment that we're learning in currently, the school is no longer providing tissues for the classrooms, and the bathrooms have frequently run out of toilet paper and paper towels. And these conditions just aren't, they just aren't unhealthy for us students and teachers, but they're degrading for us and our learning environment. And the lack of supplies, reduced faculty, staff, and extracurricular activities, maximum capacity classes, and an unhealthy physical environment, these are just conditions that exist because of the continued mismanagement of school funds, poor management and decision-making, and the failure of this committee to take decisive action to correct it. I urge you to make the hard decision now. We need new leadership in this district today, not in one year, not in two years. We need it now. Please save our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah? And Tamra Robichard is next, if you want to start heading this way.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ramram, 61 Pine Street. Just to add on to what Ethan said, the conditions of the school are absolutely filthy. As any other teacher will tell you in this room, they bring their own cleaning supplies to class now. Chairs are being lifted up, and we're forced to clean the dust up ourselves. You can feel it, like you breathe in the debris, which, as Ethan stated, is degrading as students, as faculty. We don't have to be able to learn or teach in that environment. I don't think it's fair to anyone else also. I would also like to request the FY '18 budget that you guys were talking about in the subcommittee meeting today. And I would also love to request the questions that I've said to you guys two weeks beforehand about the administrator to Aspen and the administrator to ASOP. And there are more to that list, but I won't be able to get to it now. And then lastly, I'd also like to talk about the stipends given to teachers regarding extracurricular activities. Right now, no teacher has been signed. There are no advisors to any clubs, meaning technically, whenever a letter is sent out for our clubs, I've been signing the letters because I'm in charge for my club. There's no advisor, and they know that their time is money. And I don't think it's fair to ask of those teachers to watch over our extracurricular activities without being given some sort of compensation, no matter how minimal or small the amount is. It's still, it's still an amount that should be fairly given to them. And I think that this, the fact that such a thing is being pushed to the side and not being dealt with now is something that we should consider and sign.
Okay. Sarah, thank you. Tamra Robichard, and then Cynthia Gould, and then David Pelosi, if you want to start heading up this way.
Tamra Robichard, 107 Third Street.
I'm sorry, 107 what?
Third Street.
That's what I thought.
In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the Lemmonster Education Association, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. David Pelosi, then Robin Gremmel?
Cynthia Gould, 97 Beaconsfield Road, Worcester, Mass. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you. David, and then Robin, and then Barry Hudson.
David Pelosi, 3 Evergreen Circle, Sterling. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding the possible contract violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, David. Robin, and then Barry?
Robin Gremmel, 513 Richardson Road, Pittsburgh. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Robin. Barry Hudson, and then Robert Lee, and then Molly Donovan.
Good evening. My name is Barry Hudson. I'm on the Executive Board, Director of Lemmonster High School. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of the school committee and questions surrounding possible contract violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of Superintendent Jim Jolliger. Thank you.
Your address, Barry?
10 Arnold Road, Lemmonster, Massachusetts.
Robert Lee, and then Molly Donovan, and then Nancy Heinold. Robert?
Robert Lee, 24 Sterns Ave, Lemmonster, Mass. I normally get two minutes, so I'll try to be quick. I'm in a position where I am very strongly considering or trying to find a way to take my own children out of the Lemmonster school system. This is especially disturbing because I've been a teacher for 16 years, 10 of which right down the hall in this building. And I do it because, I think, not because of the teachers, but because the conditions and the situation. I can't send my kids to a middle school with potential 40 in a class. I can't have my kids here at the high school if it's unsafe, if it's filthy, if it doesn't have the programs that the kids want to have. And it's frustrating because I've been to a lot of these meetings, and I've heard a lot of this talk about how there isn't money, and there is. It's just where we choose to spend it. And eventually, they're going to throw some money at this place, and the floors are going to get cleaned, and the things are going to get picked up. But what's not going to change overnight is the culture that has been damaged here. That's going to take a long time. We've already had an exodus of good, young, strong teachers who put in extra work, and those are not the teachers that tend to return to a school system in this kind of disarray. And the damage to the culture is going to take years to fix. It's not going to happen overnight. And it's sad. You have a lot of great teachers here in this district who are sad. They have to go, and they have to enter their classroom, and they have to deal with their students, and they are sad, and they are frustrated, and they're here tonight begging for help, which doesn't look like it's going to come this year. And we're bracing for next year, and these are when these decisions are going to have to make. And it just, it's a very difficult situation that all these people are in. And I echo the sentiments of the other teachers that have spoken, because if we don't, if we don't have change immediately, the long-term effects, maybe after you're gone, Mr. Mayor, the long-term effects are going to remain. The culture and the damage is going to remain. All right.
Thank you, Robert. Molly Donovan? Nancy Heinold, and then William Graves? Molly?
I'm Molly. I live at 145 Jamestown Road, Lemmonster.
You don't have to give your number, just the street is fine.
Oh.
I'm just telling if anybody in the audience here. Jamestown Road is fine, Lemmonster.
So I, this is my first time going to a school committee meeting, but after observing everything I see on a daily basis at school, I felt the need to come here and express my opinion. Every day at school, I become more and more disgusted in what Lemmonster High School has become. I am now used to hearing things like, "Our janitor only gets 15 seconds to clean a room," or "This bathroom is locked because no one can clean it." During this allergy season, our school is completely out of tissues, and to those who say, "Go use toilet paper," we can't. There is none of that either. We use paper towels for everything. What happens when the paper towels run out? Do we use lined paper? The fact that our school cannot provide us with basic sanitation is not okay. Neither is a $75 club fee that won't allow those who can't afford this to participate in extracurricular activities, which in turn will eventually guilt trip some teachers to conduct clubs for free. Not only this, but club populations will decrease, some may even stop, which is unfair for students who spend all day waiting to pursue their interests. Today, I found out that arts were proposed to be cut out, but this plan was, did not happen. Because of this, I fear for the arts at LHS next year. Many, including myself, intend on pursuing various arts in the future. It is unfair to take away art classes that to some kids are as important as science or math. I need to take AP portfolio art next year if I want to attend a good college. I know cuts need to be made, but I think the impact or future impacts have had more worse effects than originally anticipated.
Thank you, Molly. Nancy Heinold, William Graves, and Joshua Claus.
Good evening. Nancy Heinold, Debbie Drive, Lemmonster.
Thank you.
In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and the questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Nancy. William Graves? Josh, and then Emily Coke?
Good evening. I'm William Graves. I live in Belknap Street in Westboro, Massachusetts. I teach 9th grade English here. This is my 17th year at Lemmonster, and I have never seen conditions as I've seen them this year. The place is indeed filthy. You cannot find a custodian during the day, and there's just, supplies are running low, if not out. The rooms are not cleaned, and I echo the comment, the feelings of my colleagues that Mr. Jolliger should be asked to resign immediately.
Thank you, William. Josh? Emily? And then Michelle Oliveri?
Reverend Joshua Claus, 218 Central Street, here in Lemmonster, and also candidate for Ward III School Committee. Let me be on the record here tonight, as I address this committee. I completely support the suggestion by the Lemmonster Education Association in calling for the Superintendent's immediate resignation. As do many voters. I've spoken with walking Ward III and simply listening to their concerns. Ward III residents wanted him gone before the start of the school. This is not about politics, it's about what is right. My comments tonight here are going to be focused on the state of our schools and show my participation as a citizen and a parent in this community because I care. I care so much about my son's future, along with the future of all the children in this community. Tonight almost feels wrong inside of my heart to be here at a meeting when all I want to do is go home and reflect with my family to celebrate my deceased mother's 58th birthday. Here's a brief history lesson for all the children in Lemmonster that might be listening. On October 1st, in 2017, a lone gunman suffering from mental illness fired into a crowd, killing dozens and injuring hundreds. It's a terrible part of history. And why have we not opened this meeting at the Lemmonster School Committee meeting with a moment of silence in light of the horrifying events for a moment of silence is stunning to me? Regardless, we must come together and work together, even in difficult times. That's why I'm here. I will close my sentiments by suggesting this committee honor the oath of office you took, listen to the requests by the public you serve, and act, as it's your obligation to do so accordingly. By waiting until the end of the school year is absolutely neglectful, and allowing the Superintendent to be a part of the budget process for the 2018-2019 school year is, makes no sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. Emily? And then Michelle Oliveri, and then John Shannon.
Hello. Emily Coke, Arlington Street, Lemmonster. I'm a Lemmonster resident. I live here in Lemmonster. I teach in Lemmonster, and I am the parent of a future Lemmonster Public School student. I love living here. I love working here. But I love my son more than any of those. And if he were to start school this year, there is a 0% chance that he would attend this district in the state that it is in now. So in light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Michelle Oliveri, John Shannon, and Lynn Spillos?
Michelle Oliveri, Cathy Street in Pittsburgh. I do not have students that attend Lemmonster Public Schools, but I do have a niece and nephew that live in Lemmonster. And I tell you right now that they will not be attending Lemmonster Public Schools as long as I have anything to do with it. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of the school committee and the questions surrounding the possible contractual violations, and as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I am requesting that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you. John Shannon, and then Lynn, and then Jennifer Basset?
John Shannon, Main Street, Lemmonster. I'm a building rep at Francis Drake. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I, along with the other building rep, Kate Phillips, request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Lynn? And then Jennifer Basset, and then Chris? Is it Kyeen? I can't read it. Is it K-Y-N-E, it looks like? Kyeen? Okay.
Lynn Spillos, Farm Hill Road, Lemmonster. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Lynn. Jennifer Basset, and then Chris? And then Ashley Arpano?
Jennifer Basset, Mahogany Run in Lemmonster. I'm a resident, a taxpayer, and a teacher at Lemmonster High School. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Chris, and then Ashley Arpano, and then Ed Ordway?
Chris Kyeen, North Row Road, Sterling, Mass. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and the questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of Mr. Jim Jolliger.
Thank you, Chris. Ashley Arpano, Ed Ordway, and Sarah Fontaine?
Good evening. Ashley Arpano, Maryam Ave, Lemmonster, Massachusetts. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the LEA, also as a resident voter and taxpayer, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Ashley. Ed Ordway, Sarah Fontaine, Dawn Olson, and Alice Cosgrove.
Ed Ordway, Lunenburg, Mass, John Street. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Ed. Sarah Fontaine, Dawn Wilson, Olson, I'm sorry, and then Alice Cosgrove.
Sarah Fontaine, Ashford, N. Hill Road, Pittsburgh. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you. Dawn? And then Alice Cosgrove.
Dawn Olson, Narrows Road, Westminster, Mass. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and the questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Dawn. And then Alice is our last speaker.
Alice Cosgrove, Elm Street, Lemmonster, Mass. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of this school committee and questions surrounding possible contract violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the Superintendent.
Thank you, Alice. Holly, did you want to speak?
I did. Thank you.
Holly Koski, Ridge, New Hampshire. The documents discussed at tonight's finance subcommittee meeting are now public record, and I would like to request a copy of the additional documents that were not included in our packet, but instead sent by email today at 4:00. I'm sure that everyone, not just me, wants to see the financial documents. So rather than everyone putting in a formal request through the right-to-know law, it would be easier to make these documents public on the website. Since it was discussed at tonight's meeting, the public should be able to get a copy of the draft document even as soon as tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the school committee? If so, just come on up, your name for the record, please, and your address, your road or street in town, I guess.
Good afternoon. Charlotte Wakis, 245 Water Street. I'm here tonight as a parent, and I don't, the school department and everybody is upset tonight. And I feel that as a parent, we don't have experience. Teachers know what's best for our kids, and they're asking us to, you know, teachers are here because they care about our kids. You know, as a mother of Lemmonster Public Schools, I'm grateful for all the teachers who are here tonight to fight for this. And with all due respect, sir, I think you should be, we need to ask school committee members, please, accept everyone's thing. members, please, accept everyone's thing and please, Mr. Jim Jolker, please do us all a favor and resign. Thank you.
Carla Lewis, 33 Country Lane. In light of the concerns that have been brought to the attention of the school committee and questions surrounding possible contractual violations, as a member of the Executive Board of the LEA, I request that the committee demand the immediate resignation of the superintendent.
Thank you, Carla.
Melissa Bible, 178 Fifth Street, Lemonster, Mass. I first wanted to say a huge thank you to all of the teachers. I've already emailed all 22 of my three children's teachers and had an IEP meeting and their feedback has been wonderful. Thank you. I also wanted to give a reminder, because I have not gotten a Connect Ed call, that there is a CPAC meeting tomorrow night at 6:30 in the conference room at the Administration Building and there is an election of officers that are desperately needed. I've documented quite a few of the health and cleanliness concerns at the school. It was also brought to my attention at open house the other night that there's not proper sanitation available for lab equipment and that it was said matter-of-factly that you need to bring Lysol and cleaning materials for your children, otherwise there is the threat of lice and pink eye. And also I was hoping to get information now that we're in October about October 1 numbers, knowing how that will impact the next fiscal year coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Isabel Alera, Powderhouse Lane, Lemonster. So I am not part of the executive...
Can you just spell your last name for me?
A-L-E-R-A.
Okay.
I am not part of the Executive Board of the LEA, but I would like to say that I stand with the LEA. I just, teachers and students and your residents are who you represent and these are the people coming with you again and again with these same concerns and it's time that you listen. And I know, I know it's difficult, I know your job is very difficult, and I know that it's thankless, but this is what they want, this is what they need, this is what the students need. It's just quite frankly very disappointing, heartbreaking, saddening to continually sit in that seat and hear the same concerns over and over again. These teachers have become like family to me. I know many of them personally and just to, just to hear them, their hearts are breaking. They're sitting here with their hearts aching, asking you, begging you for help, begging you to support them, and so that's all I ask. I just ask that you support the staff of the Lemonster Public Schools. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll close this portion of the meeting. Thank you all who spoke. Jennifer, can we get, could I get a list of the Executive Board? Because I think it changes from time to time. And I used to get a list and I don't think I've gotten an updated one, so if I could just get that. Yeah, thank you. No hurry, but if I could get it. And if we could just recess for a minute, just, not recess, but go to the issue of the cleaning of the buildings so we can get an update from Glenn and while everyone's still here, I know everybody has school tomorrow and kids to put to bed and read and all that, make sure they get their homework done, they haven't photoshopped their report cards. But anyway, could we recess with a motion to, not recess, but move this up on the agenda?
Yes, sure, make a motion to move it up in the agenda.
Is there a second? All in favor? Okay. Jim and Glenn, can you just give us an update on the cleaning? That clearly is something that can't continue on. We're in our third week of school year in October.
Yeah, we, we've addressed the situation since we started, received feedback from teachers, members of the public, et cetera. We've sent a formal letter to the cleaning contractor of which all the members of the school committee have a copy of that letter. We've been meeting with them regularly. We met with them last Thursday. They have totally changed their management team as it is assigned to Lemonster and they have totally focused on meeting with each of the senior custodians in each of the building, meeting with the principals who are the building leaders, as well as the Director of Operations who is now responsible and assigned to the Lemonster Public Schools. Will be meeting with the principals at our school leadership team tomorrow. So just over the last couple of weeks, we've really stepped up our focus and our concentration. I don't think that, you know, based upon the comments that were made tonight, you know, the, this has been occurring over the last week or so. I'm not sure that the, a lot of the points that were made tonight is representative of the work that they've been doing recently, but we hope to be able to totally change that over the next couple of weeks. So Glenn, I don't know if you have, would add to that.
Hold on, can you, just for everyone's understanding, so can you explain that we have senior custodians and then we had junior custodians?
Yeah, we have.
So how many are?
No, no, I'm sorry.
We had, I'm sorry, we had.
Yes.
So how many senior custodians are there?
We have, we have a senior assigned to every building and they're there for a full shift during the course of the day. And then in turn, the contracting company comes in at the end of the school day essentially and then works through the remainder of the evening in the buildings. So they supposedly are fully staffed and have assigned resources to every building and they're going around to every building and doing quality control checks, et cetera. Now this is just within, I met with them last Thursday.
Right, right.
So they were stepping up their management of the building since last Thursday.
And so who's responsible, like for supplies, like, you know, cleaners and toilet paper?
All the ordering of supplies and everything is done through the senior custodians.
All right, so it's not the cleaning company that supplies the...
No, they wouldn't, they would be responsible for actually putting the supplies into the restrooms, et cetera, but the ordering of the supplies is done by the seniors.
And then there would be that private company that would supply the, I mean, so in other words, we don't have access, our custodians don't have access to cleaning supplies, toilet paper, tissue, paper towels?
Oh, no. Yeah, because they're all in the buildings and they're audited by the seniors and when the contracting group comes in, their responsibility is to replenish all the supplies and do a thorough cleaning of the buildings.
But during the day, they're available somewhere, they're in the building somewhere.
Oh, yeah, they're in the buildings, yeah.
Okay. All right, questions? We'll just go around. Hold on, hold on.
Did we lose people during the school day, though, that would be, you know, making sure a bathroom, toilet paper or whatever? You know, we have a senior custodian during the day, did we have juniors in there during the day?
Yeah, it depends on, Glenn, help me out with the staffing, but it depends on the size of the building as to how staff was assigned, so.
A school like the high school should, did have one senior custodian and one or two junior custodians during the day and they filled it, additional junior custodians during the evening.
So current, I was just going to say, so currently just by building, we have the one senior and nobody else supporting him during the day, which we had previously.
I'm not sure if that's the case.
So they're basically, they keep the ship afloat during the day and then at night when the building closes, that's when supposedly, so in the morning when you get here, should be like the grand opening, right? Hold on.
Let them answer.
I'm just saying, in theory, in theory, so that, ideally, during the day, the custodian would keep things together and then at, at night, the cleaning company could come in and by morning...
Everything should be clean.
Everything should be clean.
Yes.
Idealistically, in theory.
Yeah, but I guess Glenn didn't get a chance to answer my question.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if we had, say, two custodians during the day at the high school on top of the senior, we still have before, we still have those people now or we don't? Now everyone comes in?
No.
Okay, let me... It's important that we're speaking to Glenn.
The contract with the cleaning company was to require them to do the same level of cleaning as the former junior custodians. They have not done the job. Starting a contractor of the size takes manpower and they do not bring the manpower on fast enough. They have to go through a detailed process to bring people on, they have to be Cory-checked, they have to be fingerprinted, and that takes time. They also recruit for this area where they're based out of Tewksbury. There have been extreme shortcomings and the staffing is being built. I believe based on the recommendations I contacted about their level of work, that they can do the job once they're fully staffed and people show up to work. A separate issue is the cleaning supplies. They were, they had an opportunity to bid on the cost of providing cleaning supplies and they beat the prior provider in cost. And so there was a transition from old paper towels, toilet paper, tissue paper, et cetera, to this new company. And we tried to be cost-effective and utilize all the existing products before they installed the new, more efficient dispensers. But there, again, they let us down. They didn't properly allocate the remaining resources to a few schools. They came in and installed dispensers, didn't have the product to install those dispensers immediately and there was a lack of appropriate paper goods, sanitary goods, et cetera. They have been made well aware of their shortcomings. The superintendent has met with them on numerous occasions. The regional operations director is meeting with the principals tomorrow morning, the president of the company, hopefully will get a chance to meet with the mayor, to answer the mayor's vocal concerns about what's going on. Hopefully that will be done this week. But they've been told that what they've been doing is not working.
But do we have someone in, you know, we had more than one person at the high school during the day before. Do we have, or are they looking to still staff? Or what's the status of the daytime? I know the nighttime's not worked at all, but what about in the future?
I, I don't know the staffing at each of the schools. That's Tony Serbasi oversees that, not me. Our facilities director has been charged with overseeing the cleaning contract.
And then how many more days are we going to wait before we say this isn't going to work?
I can't answer that question. Hopefully the person has an opportunity to meet with the mayor and that answer can be resolved.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think there has to be a cutoff at some point when there either, nothing stays the same, right? It improves or it gets worse, doesn't stay the same. So at some point, we have to see soon that things are improving and that this company is really capable of delivering, because as you said, there's a lot of components of this, of the job.
They're clear, capable based on their recommendation referrals and their other clients, but they've fallen flat to date.
Yeah, I mean, clearly.
To date.
And I'm worried about our, about us continuing on that path of giving them more time, more time. We're into October now and so I think that's, the committee's concern is how long, you know, how much for the, I mean, I'd certainly willing to speak to the president of the company to hear what his plan is. I mean, look, I'm in business. Sometimes you have to lose money to deliver on, on a contract and it happens. You messed up and, and you have to go out and hire another company to backfill that to, you know what I'm saying? In other words, you do and you lose money, but it's part of your reputation, it's part of what you, you know, he said he could take the job and he hasn't performed. So, all right, other questions? I think Wendy had her hand up next.
So as you all know, Nona, Cody, Ronnie and I went to that meeting with the LEA, which I was going to talk to you all about later on, but since we're talking custodial, I thought I would just address real quick the, some of the concerns that weren't stated in these, just to make sure these are on your radar. We've been told of reports of rodents, dirty kitchens, feminine hygiene receptacles not being maintained, so overflowing, ants and roaches. So the question is asked, is there a pest management plan in place for the district? Teachers and students doing custodial work and at least three teachers with pink eye and skin irritations aggravated by school sanitary conditions? And the question of, I know Glenn just said Cory checks were being done, are you, is somebody at downtown looking at and seeing the results and verifying that all of the people in the building have been checked? And those were the custodial concerns?
Go ahead, Glenn.
We verify fingerprinting checks. They're a private employer, they do the Cory checks. We verify, they have to go through us to get the fingerprinting check to work in the schools. Again, I don't know what the cause of pink eye is.
All of the items that you mentioned were in the letter. If you saw the letter that I had sent, it was all included, so.
But it's just part of, we were asked to bring back our report from that, that meeting and this was part of it and it fit in what we were talking about.
Nona was next, we'll go around.
Just to build upon what Wendy said at that meeting, I also met with some parents last week and they were expressing the same identical concerns. So I don't think it's just staff reporting it, it's the yards reporting it also.
We're aware of that.
I mean, I was at a couple of the open houses myself and witnessed, you know, some issues with the cleanliness and availability of toilet paper. So I certainly, you know, I'm also concerned and we want to ensure that, you know, we have obviously appropriate facilities that's, you know, clean and sanitary. So this is something that, you know, for folks to be aware of that, I think all of us have been continually addressing since the start of the school year.
Have they been paid yet?
No.
I'm agreeing with your question.
I just want to understand what the role of the facilities director is. Where we've reorganized the custodial staff, you know, I would think a facilities director is going to oversee all the buildings and I heard you mention that, but I'm not, I'm not hearing any oversight over all these issues, which I think should be in that, the responsibility of that person. So could you address that?
The facilities director does not directly supervise the senior custodians or the junior custodians. It's up to the seniors to supervise what goes on in their buildings. But he is the director of facilities, he's responsibility for the maintenance, upkeep, renovation of the schools. So he has been assigned the task of overseeing the cleaning contract and he has been involved intensely and tried to see that work. I won't go into all the details, but I've said it before, we are not pleased with, as is known, with the quality of the schools and we're working to get them up and running quicker, better, faster, and adequately. And it's a big job. They weren't prepared when they, they started the contract. They tell us again and again that they're building up their staff, that they will provide the level of service that they guaranteed us when we signed the contract and we're holding them to it. It's unfortunate that we have to go through growing pains, which are adequately expressed not only tonight, but throughout the past couple of weeks.
Anyone else, Cody? Go ahead.
Jim, when you were talking with the representatives of this company, did they give you any kind of timeline after you expressed these concerns as to how they were planning to address them?
Yeah, I think in the letter that I had sent, it was immediate. I needed immediate, the items to be immediately addressed, especially the items that Wendy Anderson had brought up. They came in, they reviewed with me an entirely new organizational structure that they had assigned to Lemonster and they were supposed to start immediately on implementing and getting the work done. So that was what was expressed to me last Thursday at 1:00, so.
Okay. I do think at some point, you know, we need to determine when this, we need to seek other solutions.
Yeah.
Another question. Have the senior custodians been relaying this, you know, level of concern that the public and our teachers have had?
Yeah, I met with the senior custodians on Wednesday morning prior to meeting with the, with the contracting company, because I wanted to make sure that they had an opportunity to be able to come in, speak directly to, to me, tell me what the feedback is of what's going on in the buildings. I recorded all of the data that they provided me on Wednesday to the cleaning contractor on Thursday when I met with them. So it's a mutual situation, they feel the same way, because they're very proud of their buildings. They're, they've been in the buildings for a long period of time, they do excellent work in their buildings and they're proud of their buildings and they don't like the fact that they come in in the morning and the work isn't being done, so.
Right. All right, thank you.
Ron, did you have any?
Yeah, I do. Yes, I went...
Yes, I went there with Wendy, Nona, and Cody. One of the things that stuck out, and it worries me, is about the feminine hygiene receptacles that were not being properly maintained, and also about the pink eye. I know it causes pink eye, and I also am very concerned if, if, note the word if, if the hygiene is not being kept up, we could be held liable for people becoming sick. That's, I'm not making this up. Are we prepared for the hospital costs of somebody having to go to the hospital because of infections that can be traced back to here? Pink eye, we kinda push, we kinda laugh at it because we put the other side in the eye and it goes away. But I know there are some places in this, in this world that pink eye develops to blindness and death. I'm not happy. As a nurse, I have to say something. I can't just poo-poo away. Yes, we hired a new company, but if I'm told that they weren't ready to hit the ground running, that's a little worrisome, because supposedly they had, get all these references, and they were glowing references. Something happened.
Glenn, what was the estimated cost? I know there's longer-term savings. What were, what's our one-year cost savings? Estimated?
Currently here between $150,000 to $200,000, we estimate saving based on this contract.
So, you know, I think that this committee needs to make a decision with a hard date, you know, whether it's this Friday, or Wednesday, or next Wednesday, or whatever, short term. And then we have the financial ramifications of, you know, we did this thinking would get very different results, and ultimately we may be coming back to you to say we overran our budget again if, you know, we abandon this current project. We'll try to eke the money out of somewhere, but, you know, looking at-
No, it's a long, long spring and summer process, and then, this is just like insult to injury here, to come in and then have this happen. It's just, there's just, this is just the worst thing that could happen, and, you know, we have a lot, millions invested in these buildings, and to see them not cared for, and the grounds not cared for. So I think, you know, I certainly will meet with the president of the company, he's asked to meet, and so I will, and I think my response first was, can they do the job or can't they? And on the meeting with somebody to tell you they can do the job if they can't. So I guess we'll afford the president of the company an opportunity, but if he, really, if he, I mean, I'll tour the schools, but clearly if he can't deliver on it, then we have to move to some other option. And I'd say, you know, it's the second today, I'd give it maybe another week, and honestly, and that's even pushing it for, and then, we haven't finalized the contract yet deliberately, held back, because I was concerned, so we haven't signed off on it, Greg still has it on his desk. So I'd say, yeah, even a week's pushing it, but let's give it the benefit of the doubt and see if there's any improvements in whether he can deliver or not. And then if he can't, then I just think we, we just can't let this go on another day.
So to me, that's Friday, you know, a week is Friday.
Wow.
Well, a meeting with him tomorrow, I think, if he's available, is he in town tomorrow?
Whenever you give him a time, he will be here.
So tomorrow, and then a week from then, which is next Tuesday. And then I think if we can't see some remarkable improvements, then I think we've got a week to come up with option B, which, which has to be better than this option. So that has to be, I mean, just not acceptable to not have clean schools. I mean, that's basic. That's just, you know, that grand opening look that we're used to every day. Nona?
I just wanna comment on one thing. I cannot fathom a one senior custodian can handle just the lunchtimes here at the high school. That is, I can't see how they can do the job. A one custodian to be responsible during the daytime to take care of this school and, I don't know, it's, I was appalled to hear the concerns, both parents and teachers, of what they're seeing in the schools. I hope it can be remedied.
Okay, so I'll shoot you a time. I don't know, was he around a particular time or whatever?
Give me a time now, I'll have him here.
And then we'll do a week from then, and then if it isn't remarkably improved, I mean, if he doesn't think he can deliver. And I understand, he's trying to ramp up and hire people in a time when it's difficult to hire anyone these days. There's so many, there's not enough people to fill all the jobs, and I'm sure he's running into that, and then Cory checks and all that, but clearly he hasn't delivered, and he's got a week to deliver, and I don't know if he can. So I'll speak with him tomorrow, and then we'll have an answer for everybody by next Tuesday, either way. All right? All right, thank you, Glenn, thank you, Jim. Okay, we'll move on to our regular meeting. Communications?
Yes, through the chair, we did have one communication to the school committee regarding the, from the LEA secretary, Leah Burns, just requesting the opening of negotiations with the teachers in unidays, so that communication is in your school committee packages, so.
And then we'll refer that to legal counsel as well, as usually part of the negotiations. Superintendent's report?
Yeah, just quickly, half-day for students is coming Wednesday, October 4th. We had a half-day towards the end of September. Same purpose, for students to be released early, gives teachers an opportunity for some faculty meeting time and professional development in the afternoon. Upcoming holiday in the school calendar, Columbus Day Holiday, which is Monday, October 9th. We have two remaining open houses in October. Priest Street Kindergarten Center is on Wednesday, October 18th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and Bennett Sanusette Preschools on Thursday, October 19th, from 5:30 to 7:30. And then looking ahead, we have the celebration of the professional teacher status, which will take place at the next school committee meeting on October 16th at Skyview Middle School. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay. We'll now move on to committee discussions. We have discussions of the Mass Association of School Committee resolutions. November 1st is the meeting to the 4th, and we need a election or a selection of a delegate for the, to represent us.
Can I make a motion to elect Ron as our delegate?
Okay, so second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Ron, do you want it?
I'll be very happy to, I mean, unless the real-
After we vote, he elected you.
Includes jet fare and airfare and-
No, 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 no.
Travel.
I pay, I don't, I don't know.
Who's going?
I am, Ron is Wendy.
It's the weekend before election.
Three of them?
It's the weekend before election.
I know.
Has everyone had a chance to look through the resolutions? Funding enrollment was there, supported by Framingham School Department, reform of the circuit breaker. I think almost everything I saw in here, we're in agreement with.
Yeah.
So would it be simpler, it would be easier to ask about what we don't agree on, because they talked about use of federal funds, privatization of public education, the oversight of public schools, including small and regional schools, the foundation budget, everything we've been talking, Affordable Care Act and Medicaid, and, so, does someone have a motion here?
I'll make a motion that we pass-
Approve our support.
That we approve our support of all these resolutions.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, Ron?
The only caveat, I'm asking you, if they change the wording, and they, I can't tell how many times it happened.
The amendment to the amendment?
Yeah.
Well-
So please be advised.
Do your best.
I will, I'll try, I'll let you know, I'll bring back the stuff that they changed with.
Okay. We'll now move on to approval of the September 18th minutes.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from September 18th, 2017.
Okay, so second?
Second.
Second by Cody. Errors or missions? Starting with Wendy, and then Nona?
The paragraph that talks about the committee members that were going to the LEA meeting, it says Nona, Wendy, and Cody, but Ronnie was on that too, so Ronnie was left out.
Okay, so noted on the-
Seven, I think?
Five.
What page was it?
Page four.
Not page, section five, sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, you just, it's, Ronnie's left off the list.
So just add Ron.
He was most definitely there, we can all attest to that.
Right.
Also, on the first page, we had Eric Kristoff. His last name begins with a K, not a C.
Okay. Anything else? If not, yes, I'm sorry.
Last page, page four, last paragraph on item five. Glenn Frato informed the committee that they would not be instituting a fee for sixth-grade transportation. I think it's important that that was a legal ruling because of the mandate by the state to cover, so I think that needs to be expanded on. This was brought up at a prior meeting, the prior school committee meeting, and it was not in the minutes of that meeting.
Well, the record has to reflect what he said.
He did say-
So, let's make sure the record reflects what he said.
But the record of the previous school committee minutes where I raised the questions were not, it wasn't included in that. That was my question.
Okay.
Is it legal? And then it came back, no, it's not legal, so we lost the contact.
No, that's not what Glenn said.
That's what he said.
You can't charge for a class because-
You wanna explain that again?
Yeah.
You explained it last time.
You can charge all, from grade one on.
Correct.
Only if they live within the two-mile radius of the school.
Right.
Right, but the issue was, whatever you do for one group of that class, you have to do for all of them. So if you charge them all, you have to charge them all, not just sixth grades for that group.
No, no.
No, that wasn't, I think, that's not what he said. We can't charge sixth grade unless they're in the walk zone.
No, right, 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 the mileage limitation is the same, but the issue was that because we're not charging K through five, but we're gonna charge K through six.
No, that wasn't it.
Yep.
Well, go ahead and explain it.
I think we need to get clarification.
Well, we all wanna leave on the same page, so go ahead and explain it.
Simply, as I understand it, you must provide transportation to all grade K through six students that live beyond the walking zones. The recommendation from the Transportation Task Force was, since we do charge for all students, grade seven through 12, that we push that down to grade six because they're middle school students, and there's difficulty saying whether students six through eighth grades, they don't check the passes every day. The idea was, let's charge sixth graders, just like we charge seventh through 12th graders. However, sixth graders cannot be charged if they live beyond the two-mile walking zone. You have to only charge-
Unless you charge the whole group. You can't charge the whole group.
But not, only if they live within the walk zone.
Only if they've lived within the walking zone.
No, I think you can charge the whole group.
We, he, what he had said-
That was, in fact, what was presented to the task force, and we verified that, we could not verify that. Some districts do.
Right.
But the regulations are, they have to, if they live beyond two miles, you must provide transportation.
Right.
At no cost. You can charge students who live within two miles if they ride the bus.
And it doesn't matter if you charge all the grades or just one of the grades.
I'm not sure I agree with that, but, but all I'm saying is, I-
All right, we just, what does-
I think we need to reflect the, you know, what's real, so I guess I'm just making the comment that, my understanding was that originally we wanted to charge for sixth grade and nobody else from K through fifth. And I brought it up that they're covered under K through six rule, okay? And at that time, you said, no, it's okay, we can charge sixth grade.
Correct.
So you came back, and I think what you came back with was, we shouldn't be charging sixth grade. So I just want clarification of that.
I apologize if I didn't explain myself. You can charge students who attend sixth grade who live within the two-mile walking zone, but you cannot charge students who live two miles farther from the zone. Given that fact, and given the number, minimum number of students that live within that two-mile zone, and the fact that we have to determine whether or not who is, as the crow flies, it's a driving area, it was determined that, talking to members of the task force, that we not continue with that proposal. We simply continue the user fee, as currently is for grade seven through 12.
Right, but as a district, we're not, we can mandate charging everybody, we're just mandated to provide the transportation, but we can also charge K through six. We're not ma, we're mandated to provide transportation for K through six if they live outside of the one and a half miles. But anybody can charge, as long as we provide the transportation. So I just wanna make sure that that's understood.
That's not my understanding.
I think we'd need a legal opinion or interpretation, because I think it's inside or outside the walk zone.
So we will leave that, one item out, but the rest of the minutes seem to be okay.
Yes.
Motion to approve, we have a first and second, all in favor? Thank you, Glenn. We have approval of the minutes.
So we, can we get an interpretation on that?
We can.
Thank you.
Let's move on to finance committee. You had a subcommittee meeting tonight, would you give us a full report, please?
Yes. Very many things. So the first one is, we do have an 18 budget, we got in our packets. At this point, what we're gonna do is look at 18. Now, this will be going back like what we wanted to do back in, you know, say, May, compared to 16's end, compared to 17's ending numbers, and look at the lines and make sure that we understand, you know, how, where they came from. It's immediately clear that we're short, you know, we started athletics saying, go ahead, and then shorted the line, so we might have some trouble there. And historically, we underfund the substitute line. We end up spending more than $500,000 on substitutes, and this year, I think we came in at 425. We budgeted 425, and that's way up from, you know, like 225 from other years. So we're in better shape to not be underfunding that line, but not perfect shape. So we need to still now go over it, you know, we have a preliminary, and we can touch and feel something. We haven't, we wanna bring it back to this committee to vote on it, though, and we haven't done that yet. So we still need to approve an 18 budget, but we're much, much closer now that we have something in our hands. The revolving account sheets we got aren't correct, so they are in the packet, but three show negatives, and we just haven't spent that much money yet, so we know that they're wrong. We'd like to formally request the chargeback figures for 17, and that will directly impact 18, because that will change our numbers. So I'm not sure if you want me to-
You can just call John.
Contact John?
Yeah.
And we're gonna ask for the breakdown as well.
Right.
The one thing we talked about, another thing we talked about was priorities that we wanna try to get back in as soon as possible. Looking at the budget very preliminarily, you know, that doesn't look like there's a lot of wiggle room in salaries or anywhere. We're still hiring people. We do need a resource up at Sanusette, a temporary resource, and knowing that I just said that we shorted our substitute line, we think that we have to go to that line and hope for the best to get somebody up there as soon as possible. So we wanna be able to move on that right away.
And I spoke to the superintendent about that the other day, and so we don't wanna wait on that. So you had mentioned you wanted to wait to see what, next month on unemployment?
Yeah, but the finance committee, subcommittee gave me different directions.
Right, so we can wait on some of these others, right? So what can you recommend tonight for, to move on? The first two?
So we'd like to move on the first one, for sure.
Yes.
And again, we'll take it from our substitute line, because it's a temporary position, you know, that's not something that's permanent. For two, three, and four on the list, which is the world language, putting a senior custodian at Francis Drake, and then banned instruction at Skyview, would like to hedge our bets and go ahead and do those, knowing, hoping that the unemployment number comes in less than what we budgeted. If it doesn't, we'll be shorting that line too. So we kinda put that back on to you.
What, Glenn, what, have you come up with anything in the 18 budget that shows the comparison? I mean, you had some staff leave that were probably at higher step, and then you hired new people at lower steps. Did you figure, did that have any significant cost savings in it, or?
Unfortunately, it didn't have significant cost savings. The finance committee is gonna compare. The Finance Committee is going to compare line item expenditures by object and code over the last two years with what we included in this year's proposed budget. One line item, as Kristoff was pointing out, is we're hoping that we, we're conservative in our budgeting for unemployment compensation. Based on the first six weeks of the summer, we were right on target to what we thought we were going to spend. But a lot of people have taken jobs, a lot of people were rehired by the district, and we'll have a better gauge next, when we get the next four-week invoice. And based on that, we can then extrapolate how much, whether or not we think will be savings. And it brings me back to the time the superintendent and I met with you and your administrative team mayor, you thought we were way overestimating unemployment. We hope you're right. And we'll know that in about a month.
I don't have a crystal ball.
But...
I would say it's safe on the one, two, and three. I would say, I don't think you can hold off. I mean, the world language part, you hold off another month, now we're into November, you get through the holidays. You've got a whole half a year that you went, and then the senior custodian is basically a replacement or from the staff reduction, but this is the person that does the plowing.
But that position was worked out of the budget. They didn't hold the position open, the finances piece, so we're going to have to fund it. So, because we asked the same thing.
I would do one, two, and three, but I'd really say at this point...
And we'll wait for unemployment on...
What's the cost on the ban?
Well, we, we all kind of thought that was a high estimate, because that would be a...
Can you get a better estimate on that?
Okay.
All right, so why don't we leave four as a question mark, and we'll do one, two, and three, so that's the resource for Sammaset School.
Yeah.
The word languages for middle schools, the senior custodian at Francis Drake, and then the only question mark, based on the cost, and it shouldn't be a big deal, but just to soon get the cost...
I've got a better number, yeah.
Would be the after-school ban instruction at Skyview. And the other two will...
And the other two are still very important, and we're not trying to diminish anything, but we knew we didn't have enough money to go to one, two, three, or four, so we want to make sure that we don't do that too fast.
But these are in order of priority, in terms of...
Yes.
Okay, all right.
We just want to make sure, too, that if we're going to use unemployment cost savings, these are multi-year expenses, so...
But, but unemployment, isn't?
Right.
Right.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you're going to use your savings from unemployment, that's for one year.
Still have to figure out where to pay for it next year.
So, yeah, you've got to cover it for future years with some other...
But you're not going to have to pay in employment next year?
Right.
Any.
Right, but the source of the funds is one-time money for recurring costs.
We'll need to make sure they get built into the budget, and that'll change our...
Right, yeah.
Well, it's, but, but you're not going to be paying out the amount of money that you paid in unemployment cost this year. You'll be able to shift that over.
Permanently.
Right, permanently.
When, I think the question was asked by, let's see, I thought I highlighted here. Hang on one second. Anyway. What guarantees do we have for next year versus this year? One of them is the unemployment insurance, which is substantial. The other one in, I think what Melissa touched on was the unemployment, the enrollment numbers, which I asked Jim about, and we should count, you know, we should make sure that we drag every student to school on that particular day, and whatever we have to do to make sure they're here.
It was today.
Today. Today.
Okay, so, good job.
We're finishing the last couple of registrations.
So it's today, that's the number that we'll, we'll use for enrollment, Glenn, for next year.
And that's anticipated about a month for the turnaround for those?
October 30th, we have to submit our SIMs report, and based on that SIM report, we should be able to give you an estimate of what our FY 19 budget will be. Because that's what determines House Bill 1, the governor's budget, which is the quality of school spending.
So that will play into next year's, but, I mean, these are some of the guarantees. Unemployment rate is lower.
The whole budget process will be much quicker this year, hopefully the recommendations and decisions we made in early spring rather than late June. One issue that the Finance Committee did discuss, as they reiterated, issues with enrollment, briefly, but I'll touch upon it right now, is we do anticipate an influx of students from Puerto Rico. And under the current formula, we get no financial compensation for educating those students this fiscal year. If they're not here as of this afternoon, which they aren't because they can't get out, we get no funding for those students next fiscal year.
Right.
So I made some phone calls today, that there are individuals at the Department of Education that are considering whether or not to provide some funding source to offset the impact on urban communities of bringing in those students, just like they did years back for Katrina. But no decisions have been made yet. But we do have grandparents coming in to see what it's going to take to register their students, who will eventually get out of, go out of Puerto Rico and find their way to Leavenster. And, you know, the questions about enrollment, you have to have health records, you have to have grades, and coming from an area that, right now, doesn't have power to even copy report cards.
I don't, any grades will be coming for, I mean, it's just, a lot of it's on paper, I don't know, you could read the book, anyway, we'll have to, I mean, obviously, we will not be the only ones impacted, so...
No, no.
We'll have to sort of rally our resources together to look for that extra appropriation to be treated differently than other communities that haven't been impacted by it.
So the next thing is, I think that we need a vote from the whole committee, we're doing this in kind of pieces because of the way the budgets rolled out. But there was an unanticipated charge for LCE of $18,499.53, which we're going to pay in two pieces. One would be from special donations, we're hoping there's money free in special donations to pay for that. And the other part came from the school rental fee amount, that revolving fund, yeah, about $87.50 each. And because they're coming out of revolving, I think that we need a vote from everyone, I'm not sure, so I'd rather just take one now.
Want to make a motion, just to make sure?
Can I make a question? So, make a motion to follow the Finance Subcommittee's recommendation of paying the $18,499.53 for the build-out costs.
Okay, so a second?
I'll second.
A second by Ron, any other questions or comments?
And I just, I want to make a comment, we, we really, we want to pay this bill because we think we owe the money, not because we want to pay this bill. You know, there was a discussion as to, you know, whether it was part of the contract and, you know, gentleman's agreement and how it went down. We have to do a really good job in the future to make sure that we have our contracts, you know, everything understood very, very well. But we had to do it, so...
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor? Those opposed? Okay, we'll pay those two bills and transfer those funds.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Regarding resources and monies, I just want to know, in my little mind, how much am we, how much money are we talking about if we tell this new, this company that we're having issues with that? No money, no candy, we don't want them anymore. How much money are we talking to bring back?
I don't know, because, we'd have to figure it out, because there's an impact from unemployment cost?
Right.
So, that is why we need the whole week here.
Is there a ballpark figure that we have to play with?
No, I'd say, to be safe, we should be careful, get our information, that's why we have a week to come up with Plan B, whatever that might be. And if there's no improvement, so we'll have to, we'll have, we'll have that the next meeting, or we'll, Superintendent can send that to you, whenever, Glenn, if you can send that, once you have that figured out, totally. I know you sent me some breakdowns, preliminary, but that doesn't include, you know, what you would save on the unemployment, and, I don't know, whatever else might be in there. I just hate to put a number out there and not know exactly that, what that number is. Okay.
Oh, sorry. So, the next thing is for the questions that the student brought forth, Jim, you were going to answer those directly, I just want to make sure Sarah Ramram was here about the questions.
Yes, I'll answer those directly, you know, I'll make sure that...
Just because they held me responsible the other day, I want to make sure.
The committee has all the information, and then I'll pass it on to Ethan and to Sarah.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure I get them on my list here. Oh, and we'll be able to put the 18 budget up for people to see on the website?
Yes.
By... So, I think, when if you, I think it should be up, so people can see it, but I think it needs to, it's not voted on, the line items are not voted on yet, so...
We can put a note on it.
Make sure that it's...
Disclaimer.
Yeah, disclaimer, and what would be the timeframe for that, just so we all...
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, okay. I don't know who has control over who posts whatever. And then I think we had minutes and warrants.
And we also talked about the charge-backs, we voted on...
Oh, yeah, yeah, I already asked. You told me to contact John directly to get the numbers.
Okay. Well, I just thought we could let everybody else, so we also asked for a copy of the 2017, 2018 charge-backs.
That was number three.
Okay.
So, anyone, Nona, do you want to take the warrants?
I'd like to make a motion that the following warrants be paid. Warrant nine for $1,844,061.51. Warrant 10 for $346,221.11. Warrant 11 for $1,864,847.86. Warrant 12 for $259,918.83. Warrant 13 for $2,125,113.19. And out of the grants and revolving funds, warrant nine for $152,264.29. Warrant 10 for $26,947.24. Warrant 11 for $106,268.16. Warrant 12 for $79,224.39. Warrant 13 for $226,557.41.
I'll second.
Questions? Not, all in favor? Just as a reminder, we will be, we are very close to having our open checkbook up online, it will appear on the city's website, and every check that is written from the school department or the city will be on there. It will be clearly visible, it wouldn't, it's not going to be hidden in any specific department anywhere, it'll be right out there, and you can check to see what every check is written, and who it goes to, how much it is, payroll checks, everything will be on there. So, we're very close, final step, and we'll let everybody know when it gets up.
And then the last thing is, excepting the minutes of July 24th...
Yes, motion to approve?
And then Sue Kohler's name is the only thing that we changed the spelling of.
I'm sorry.
Okay, motion, a second, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second by Nona? All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. We will now move on to Policy Subcommittee.
That's me.
Yes.
So, I have, it only listed one, but there's actually two second readings that we need to do tonight, because we need to get these going. So, the first one is the transportation drop-off policy, which we presented at the last meeting, just a reminder, that's the safety drop zone for the children who can't be left home off the bus without somebody there, and there's nobody to meet them. So, that's that one. Do you want to do them one at a time?
Why don't we do...
You can do them in block.
Do it in block, yeah.
Okay. And then the other one is the extracurricular fee with the exemption list, and I just want to remind everybody, that one was, the first, the two fee structures were $75 per year, not per activity. And for free and reduced lunch students, it was 25, with a setup for families who needed to have some sort of help with that or make payments. And we had read off a whole list of exempt clubs, that if that was the only activity students were doing, they wouldn't have any fee.
I'm so moved.
Okay, motion, a second?
Second.
Second by Cody, any other questions? If not, all in favor? Okay. I'm just passing out the, this is...
And can I just, just mention one thing? With all of our fees, whether it's for transportation to and from school, whether it's for the clubs, whether it's for athletics, there is always the possibility for those families experiencing hardship, that they, you know, potentially couldn't pay a reduced or no fee. So I know somebody brought that up in public comment, but we have always had that policy in existence since we've had a fee structure, and that has not changed.
Thank you.
We just need to talk to, really, I think Lorene is the main point person for the fee collection. And she's very understanding, and we certainly have taken care of our most, you know, vulnerable population.
And we tried to make that very clear when we set forth this, these two different fee structures, that this was a guide, this was what we were going for, but that we weren't going to be hard about it, and if people needed help, they really just had to let us know.
Yeah. Okay. Susan?
I know we just voted for them on the transportation, but I'm reading it, and it's going back to your issue on the K through six. This says grade five through eight will be transported if they live one and a half miles or more from the school they attend, or if the school committee has voted to transport them. Again, six is mandated, K through six is mandated, if you live one and a half miles more, or more, from the school district, so this needs to be redone, this is not accurate according to the state.
Well, we're going to get, we'll get an opinion, and then we'll have to amend it if we have the minutes.
Okay, but we just voted on it.
The piece we voted on was the safety drop zone piece, which is, that's the peak, that's added, we, we're voting, we voted on having the drop-off zone...
The bus scheduling, we didn't vote on, I thought we already voted on it, we were on the second.
That was already in place, we only added...
That was some, no, we're voting on the adding of the drop zone, so that...
So we can amend the previous, but we're not voting on it.
Okay.
Right.
So we're going to amend this.
Right, but this was, the second meeting tonight was just on that, where we said that instead of the bus going back around, there was going to be a drop zone if a child couldn't be left, instead of...
Predominantly kindergarteners.
Right, but that we weren't going to have the bus after the whole route go back, they were going to have a drop-off zone at a school location, and then parents would be notified with it.
Okay, so this will be addressed?
Yes, and that wasn't what we voted on, so you're okay.
Good.
Okay. So, I just passed out, this is, as promised, the, I should have put draft on it, because it's work in progress, but it's the FY 17, 18 budget calendar, it's actually the 18-19, but for everyone's, just, just so we have a starting point, and we can, again, discuss this at our next meeting, but, so we have October 16th, at our meeting, we'll discuss the method and process to establish priorities for the fiscal year 2019 budget, also get a report from the administration, by then we should know, hopefully, what the enrollment numbers are. If not, we can move this around. On 11/6 in our meeting, and in November 6th, a vote by the school committee setting guidelines and fiscal policies. Two meetings may be needed to review existing policies and vote on new ones, I think that's important to head into that new year. We have policies in place on whatever it might be, not using one-time money for fixed costs, whatever that might be, that we need to decide on that, and that's what we need to do before the end of this fiscal calendar year. Then we anticipate, and again, this is just anticipating for our first meeting in February, that we'll have the governor's budget, we should know what that, those numbers are, and we can do our first budget workshop. And if we want to slide that over to a Saturday, as we've done before, that's fine, but at least, you know, we'll have a, we should have an idea of what the governor's budget is, we can start to work on, you know, the budget. Then in March, we have a budget workshop, too, and then a presentation on any anticipated changes, by then we should know anticipated changes. Glenn, we always predict, because we won't know, but the final numbers will be on healthcare costs, so we'll have a better idea, a pretty good idea, and at least update everyone on what we do know, and that would happen in our meeting in March, and again, a budget workshop, I think could be inserted in there as well. Then our second meeting in March would be the presentations by special ed, curriculum and instruction, and then a budget presentation to include technology and where we are exactly. And then on April, we would do, our first meeting would be on early education, budget presentation, athletics and arts presentation, discuss it, discussion and anticipated revenues to fund the fiscal year nineteen budget. Then we move to the beginning of May, where the superintendent, we would expect to submit a budget, and we would start our process of reviewing that. Public hearing would be at the very end of of May. Six one would be the deadline for the school committee to submit its budget. And then again, it's not usually until sometime in June.
Into July.
Into July, when the state passes the final budget. So, we can anticipate some revisions later on in the year based on the final numbers. So, next meeting, we can discuss a little bit more, if anyone has any ideas about other things they wanted here. If you want more budget workshops, if you don't want them on the regular meeting night, you want them on a Saturday, that's fine. If you think, and again, there'll be other things, like each school will need to do their presentation. If not, we can, but I wanted to make sure we have a starting point as to. So, budget process begins now, with the hopes that when we finally reach six one, we've done the whole priorities. Everyone in the public has had a chance to come and speak to their issue. We've got all of it done, and not try to do it in one month. All right? So, email me those suggestions or bring them with you at the next meeting. Okay? Anything on the new role business?
Yes. Our first, I think, thing under new business is a report back from the meeting with the LEA.
So, I, I'll be presenting that on the behalf of four of us. This is the list that we've all had a chance to look at and agree this is what we, what we heard. From the LA, LEA meeting, their list and our notes, they, these are just the things we heard them say. They wanted to know about building admin evaluations. Are they being done? And does the school committee have access to this information? That a better job needs to be done explaining new programming and planning for its implementation. Their current feeling is that programs are created without thought to the sustainability and impact of them. And they're seeing this as a lack of communication. There's a problem with LHS and CTEI teachers losing prep time to cover classes. They expressed a lot of concerns around sped compliance, but some examples were the ability to only request two files at a time, partial files or specific pieces, and the concern is that if a child is new, they don't know what they should be asking for. But, so how can they request just specific pieces? There is not enough powers or tutors for the number of kids in need. While Wi-Fi and Internet is an issue under the IT piece, it's also impacting compliance around sped with children with assistive technology. ELL is a real concern with at least one hundred level one and two students in the elementary schools without enough supports. The number of ELL students is rising, but the supports are going down. There's concerns for students at LHS that had inclusion tags and then didn't, so they're having a hard time identifying students in need. And so, teachers are being placed in a spot of not knowing if a child is on an IEP, and there's a lack of adequate translators in the building. I'll skip the custodial because we've already talked about that. At the time of the meeting, so it may have changed since, but Skyview was reporting IT improvement, but other buildings were still having trouble, so it's affecting map testing. There's a trouble with an ability to get online, which is required for the map testing, and it's not consistent. Assistive technology access is being hindered. For example, we were told of a student with a robot hookup who hasn't been able to use it. A student is using their own mobile hotspot that a parent has provided for them to bring into school so they can access their assistive technology. And that's just two examples. There are many. There's issues with supplies. Teachers at the high school are be, have reported to us that they are being told to buy their own Kleenex for classrooms. In many buildings, the textbooks are in really sad unusable shape. Some have no supplies. A lot of out-of-pocket expenses are being put on teachers this year to supplement supplies for their students more than they've seen in previous years. The elementary teachers are really feeling the loss of the agendas that we voted not to have. And then the biggest issue was communication. The LEA does not feel like they are being heard. There doesn't seem to be any communication, for example, being offered to families or teachers regarding the rollout of the new grading change, which is being expanded out to fifth grade, and will these changes be done in time to have them filled out for up to fifth grade? There seems to be a lack of collaboration at LHS between admin and teachers. And they would like to know who is taking on the work of the eliminated positions. One example is the ELL coordinator or supervisor. Is there any information on a plan put into place to raise us up from a level three school? And the information that we just passed the policy, but they want to know about fees to, and when advisors are going to know that, how it works, when it starts, and what the process for collecting fees will be. And that was really just an overview. Basically, what we heard is a lot of frustration, a lot of sadness, and quite honestly, a lot of anger.
And I, just going along with what Wendy had reported, not just sadness, but there's a huge morale problem going on. And also, these things, the IT issue, the custodial issue, the supply issue, some of the communication issue was reiterated at a meeting that I attended that had parents there. They were saying the same thing. So, it's not just, it's not just the LEA that is bringing these concerns forward. It's also parents bringing these concerns, same concerns forward. And, you know, I recommend that we put together some action plans, and maybe not one massive action plan, but some action plans, and my suggestion is to break it down into three to four categories, one being sped, the other being IT, another area being communications, and within that communications, breaking it down on how we improve our test scores.
Can I, is there a question? I think it makes sense to, you know, certainly have maybe some subcommittees tackling these issues and coming up with some strategies. I think that's helpful. I was just going to make sort of a comment about the Kleenex because that issue has come up a lot, and I'm like a person who has a box of Kleenex in every room in my house. But when my kids were in school, I distinctly remember providing Kleenex in grammar school to all my kids' classes. So, I know that's not something, I mean, maybe since my kids have graduated, we're now supplying tissues, but I know that has not always been the case, when parents were supplying boxes of Kleenex to the classrooms. So, you know, I just, you know, I think there's more important issues.
Oh, yes, but it was just an issue of teachers being told, this was one example of supplies that teachers were being told they needed to supply for their classrooms.
So, I don't think that's a teacher's responsibility.
Right, but that's what they were being told, and so that's, we went there with the instructions from the rest of you to, the only thing we were allowed to do was ask clarifying questions if we didn't understand something or needed more details to bring back to you. And that's what we did. So, this is just an overview. We did ask a lot of questions to clarify, to make sure we understood their points. We left there, I hope they felt like we listened, and so we can answer any questions that you guys might have about what we heard.
Also, just to, one other thing, the packet that you received from the LEA, there was a piece in there about negotiations. I think some of us, some of us have misinterpreted that. That was not for negotiations, the upcoming negotiations. That was negotiations two years ago. That was a letter addressed two years ago.
Yeah, I wanted to make clear, they gave that to us and then to you. It was their letter from a couple of years ago. They, their point in giving it as we heard it was, in their opinion, nothing has changed since then, and they wanted to remind us of what they were saying back then because they were still saying the same things. That was not a new letter about new negotiations.
Cody?
Kristen.
So, with the last bullet, the fees to the advisors, you know, we instituted the fee to make sure we offset the cost. The city gave us money to cover the extracurricular and the athletics.
Yeah, not their fees, but when we were going to explain to them how the fees worked and what, when they started, how they, you know, what our structure was.
But again, like the student said that she was in charge of her own group. Why doesn't she have an advisor? I want to make sure we've rolled all these.
This hasn't been sent out yet. The people that are advisors don't know that their advisor is.
Right.
Right, that's one of the.
That was the other thing we found, that the list asking for advisors' positions, because every year, every year you had to, I know when I worked in the system, I helped the principals send down a list of what positions were going to be offered, you know, yearbook advisor, class advisor, that type of thing, sent it down to personnel. In turn, they would generate a posting for those positions, and then that would be sent out to the, all the schools, and it'd be posted in all the schools, and then they had a certain amount of time to apply to those. I, from what we heard that night, it has not been done.
And they, they weren't, nobody, I guess they felt like they hadn't been notified. We were still finalizing the fee structure because we had to do our two readings, so they just knew there were going to be fees, but nobody told them when, how much, when they were starting, and they felt that that was, that's why it's under communication, because they felt like that was something they didn't have a clear answer to.
I just want to make sure that the, the clubs or groups don't, I mean, they get kicked off because that's one of the reasons why the city gave us money to ensure that they're there.
And Dr. Lord is supposed to bring us throughout the year the list of, of clubs that are dropping off, what the enrollment is on the exempt versus kids who are in both, so he, he's going to keep on top of that first.
So, Jim, can we just make sure that everything at the high schools are going?
Yeah, I, I did the fee structure soon after the school committee approved it. That went out to the principals. The extracurricular activities, at least at CTEI and LHS appeared on my desk at the end of last week. I had some clarifying questions. I approved it, and it went to human resources, so technically, they should be posted by now, so.
Okay.
So, what we should do is get a response, right, I mean, the ones that we can get responses to quickly, let's get them out right away, and the ones that require more detailed information, then we'll work on that. Those should be forthcoming. So, we should get as many out of the way as we possibly can. Cody, you've been patient. Go ahead.
So, just from the meeting, I think, you know, this does lay out a really good basis for what we heard, but, you know, ultimately, there's, there's things I think we knew would happen based off of this last budget season, but it seems that things are, at least from my perspective, worse than what we can see here from our spots on the committee. I think the point that they really wanted to convey is that this is a tipping point, that this is, this is it. They demand action, and quite frankly, I think we owe them that. I just want to echo Nona's sentiments. I think, you know, either tonight or in the coming days, we need to, you know, establish either a task force or decide whether we want to do this or subcommittees, ways to specifically address these problems because, you know, it's, it's just, it's unacceptable, and we have an obligation to address them.
Cody, one of the things that we could do is, I thought the, the new IT company had come in and done an evaluation. There was ongoing, if they completed it, have the issue to report, and I think that would be helpful to communicate if it's been completed, or at least what the status is of it right now, and then maybe communicate that back to the building principals. So, I know they were sort of knee-deep in their evaluation of the system. It's a huge system, so they're trying to get another, you know, their arms around it, get an understanding of what, you know, we're going through the same thing ourselves right now, and, you know, exactly what is this, what is the system, and then what are the voids? And so, an update on that, and then sort of a anticipation on when that might be completed, and then sort of communicate that back to everyone as to where we're at. That might answer some of the issues here where it's specifically aimed towards IT.
Right.
So, that might take care of that block right there.
I just want to express again, you know, the need to do this in a timely manner at this point because, you know, things like the IT issues are severely affecting their ability to teach their students.
Yeah.
Well, also, as we heard, the map testing. They can't, they can't access what they need to access to be able to administer these tests.
So, Jim, do we have a, an update, is that company still in that process of?
No, the, the report has been drafted. It's pretty much complete. We met with them at the end of last week, and we're just finalizing everything to present back to the school leadership team, and then ultimately to the school committee. So, that'll be done within the next couple of weeks.
Do they seem to be handling this? They seem to know and understand?
Yeah, and they're going to give us a number of recommendations, which is why we hired them, and then those can be reviewed and ultimately implemented, so.
Is the company that did the evaluation also the one that'll be supporting us, or they just evaluated?
No, they just did, did the evaluation, and then ultimately, they did do some support during the period of time that they were in, in the district. And then ultimately, based upon their recommendations, we'll be making recommendations back to the school committee as to what our next steps are for the technology.
So, who's doing all the?
They may be involved.
Who's doing all the support in the meantime now, like with the Skyview issue?
We retained one of the IT people that were on staff, and we have the tech aides in the buildings. So, they, some of them split time between the buildings, but it's pretty much the structure that we had before. It's that while we were doing the evaluation, we, relying on tech edge to do some of the work internally, so.
Because it sounds like we're understaffed in that area as well. So, I just, in terms of timeliness, I don't know what we need to do just to get people in to help, it sounds like.
Yeah, there's a definite issue where IT and sped compliance are overlapping in a huge way because when a student who has assistive technology cannot access that technology in the building because there is no Wi-Fi, students are being sent home with their work done on their device, and then being told, well, upload it to your Google Drive that you share with your teacher when you get home, which is assuming that the child has access to Internet at home. Not every child does.
We understand that.
So, this is.
And you're down three people.
Right.
Mike?
Hang on. Go ahead.
Just as a school committee member sitting here, I've lost connection three times on the Internet. Seriously, I mean, it's frustrating.
Well, you've had a connection more than I have because I haven't had one to lose.
Right, but I mean, that's, this is basic. We're, you know, twenty-first century.
Okay, so.
I think Ron had something.
The sooner we can get the answers, they might be just sort of logistical, sort of technical. I, I thought the Wi-Fi in the school was taken care of here.
Totally, yes.
Right, so we should find out why.
Thank you for going to the meeting and working with them. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did somebody else?
Yeah, I did.
Ron?
My question was, to piggyback on Eileen, is the issue about the teachers having the supplement supplies in terms of Kleenex? It all starts with a sneeze, and then all of a sudden, we're going to get sick, gur. Again, I know I'm sounding like I'm repeating myself, but are we prepared to pay for their illnesses? And the other thing is, no one's answered to me about the sped ed compliance. Why is it only allowed to request two files at a time? That was a big issue. Do you remember?
I raised it. It's on the list.
I know, I know, I know, but can that be addressed now? Is it a particular, the reason why I'm asking this is because, as Glenn was saying, because we're having some, there's a potential for more students coming in. You know what I mean?
Well, yeah, it's not just the two files piece. It's also having to, we were told, request specific pieces, and so how do you know what to ask for if the child is new? So, it's a two thing.
All right, so we've got to give the superintendent opportunity, and his administration, whoever has the answers to that, to respond.
Right, oh, yeah.
And that's what we've asked him to do.
So, can we, I mean, I think it would be, it behooves us, just because of the work that you guys put in, and clearly how everybody's feeling, that we kind of set a, are we going to do subcommittees? Are we going to do meetings? Like, can we, like, establish that?
Well, the first thing we'll do is have the superintendent respond to whatever he can, whatever he can respond to.
Is there, is there things that we can go down, write down the list, Jim, that you can say, yes, I can respond to this in the next, you know, week or so, and then we can narrow it down what we need to do more?
Right, and then we can address the rest of it.
Mike, I can pretty much respond to, to everything. You know, I, I was working with many different documents, and it was coming from many different sources. So, if you give me the one document, if this is the document that you want me to respond to, then we'll respond to that. But, you know, we need to have some continuity with what you want answers to.
I, I think we, the four of us, we agree this is a pretty good representation of the, of the major concerns.
All right, so.
So.
That's fine.
Are you recommending that that be the one?
Yeah, we compiled this from their list, and the four of us from our notes, so.
All right?
That's fine.
Is that it? Were you in agreement on that?
Yes.
Okay, so he'll answer the, and the ones that you can't answer or whatever, that you're not comfortable with, or that you're going to need more time on, let us know, and that's, we may have to set up a subcommittee for that. All right?
So, can I just ask one more question? How do we respond? How will that, how does all that get back to them as far as answers?
Superintendent responds to us, and we'll respond back to them.
So, hopefully, on our next meeting, we'll be able to have a response.
Yep.
Meeting, the next meeting?
Meeting, is what I said.
Or sooner. If he has a response sooner, then it would be sooner.
So, will it go out to us, and then will one of us send it on to Jen?
Then whoever was at that meeting will sit and review it.
Okay.
And then when you're comfortable with the, the response, then on behalf of the school committee, you'll respond back to them.
Usually, it would go through Chris, but don't all communications, she would send it out?
Chris?
Yes, no?
Whoever. But I'm saying.
Skip or CC?
The same group that met with the teachers would then look over this document, and then if they're comfortable, would send it back to whoever.
Oh, so, okay, we'll look over and then send it to Chris to forward on to.
And a lot of us need to look it over.
Yes, oh, no, no, what I'm saying is, they'll, they'll first look at it.
Sure.
Whatever discrepancies it might be, and you're comfortable, and, I mean, that's the way it started, right? It started with. It started with a meeting with them, and should end that way.
Okay. You all okay with that?
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
You put all the work into it, so we'll just kind of go over it, and if we see anything that needs to be added or deleted, then we will, and if not, then we'll go from there. Cody, that, you're on that group?
Yes, it's Cody, Ronnie, me, and Nona.
Okay, anything else on the newer old business? Newer old business?
Yeah, I just want to remind committee members that it's important, when you speak with the press, that you represent yourself and not this body. We are no one unless we collectively are a group, so no one is entitled to speak to the press as our group and give their opinion, and I just want to remind everybody of that. That's in our protocols as well. And the primary spokesperson right now is the mayor for school committee issues.
Okay, anything else on the new role business? Just Kristen.
The only thing I forgot, under finance, was we have a request that we got from the Leavenster High School Theater Company. They have some financial needs. We just didn't get to it, we ran out of time, so I don't want anyone to think that we didn't, we're ignoring it, we just, we just didn't get to it. And we have a tentative meeting set up for next Thursday, a week from Thursday, the twelfth?
Yeah.
At six o'clock.
Okay.
So, we gonna vote on that?
The theater company? Probably not till we talk about it.
Okay.
All right. If there's no other business to come before the school committee on the new role business, do we have motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session under chapter thirty-nine, to discuss contract negotiations, and we will not be returning.
Okay, we thank you all for joining us this evening. Thank you for attending. Have a safe night. We will not be returning to regular session.
Do you want yays?